I am, sir.
Okay, all right. I'm going to call the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners meeting for October 26th, 2021 to order. We will start with a salute to the flag. Commissioner Hill, would you lead us this morning?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, that takes us to item number two. Roll call, please.
Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Present on Zoom. Vice Chair Hartung.
Here.
Alexis Hill.
Here.
Kitty Jung is absent. Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown. Assistant District Attorney Nate Edwards, are you on Zoom?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm Jan Galasine, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us to item number three. Mr. Manager.
Item three is an appearance and presentation by Holly Gatske, UNR Cooperative Extension regarding the annual report that will include the extension program activities and fiscal information for the year.
Do we have Ms. Gatske? I don't, I don't see her in the audience.
I don't either, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair.
All right, let's, let's, let's step around that and let's go straight into item number four. Let's take public comment.
Item number four is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited, limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you call, call public comment?
Certainly. First up, we have Melissa Clement, followed by Ann Swader.
Welcome, Ms. Clement.
Thank you. Do I turn it on?
You're on.
It's already on.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Chair on I-80 and members of the county commission. My name is Melissa Clement and I, I came today to introduce myself. I am planning on applying for Senate District, District 16 to replace Ben Kiekeffer for the rest of his term. And because the timing is so short, I wanted a chance to actually introduce myself because I'm sure that many of you don't know me, although I'm a forty, almost forty-year resident in Washoe County. I went to high school at Reno High School. I have two degrees from the University of Nevada. I'm the product of a small business. My, my father had a small mining company for most of my life. My husband has a small training company. And so, small business is very close to my heart. I'm married with three kids and because my, my oldest son just bought a house in Sparks, I'm invested in this community and plan to stay here for a long time. You know, today marks 593 days into 15 days to flatten the curve. Countless executive orders later, we are still operating in a system that has no, nothing to do with the balance of powers, the constitutional, the, the constitutional way we're supposed to be running our country. Because quite honestly, government makes the best decisions closest to home. Because if I'm shopping at the Rayleigh's in District One and I, I run into Commissioner Hill, I can say, "My kid has not gone to school for six months and he is having a hard time." And Commissioner Hill can bring it here to the commission and you, you guys can deal with it. But that power sadly was taken away from you. Now, honestly, everybody understands that, that we were operating in, in waters we didn't know. And we all did the best, but 593 days later, it's time for us to, to put the power back where it needs to be. And quite honestly, legislature needs to do that. And that's why I'm asking today for you to consider me for Senate District 16. I know that as a Republican, I will have little chance of swaying votes, but I will have an opportunity to speak the truth every time that I can. And I think that's really important. You folks need to be making decisions here that have no strings attached, that's not related to funding from the federal government, the state county. We have found that funded mandates are almost as bad as unfunded mandates. Thank you so much for the opportunity to introduce myself.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ann Swader, followed by Donald Fossum. And Ms. Swader has a handout that I will distribute when she comes to the podium.
Ms. Swader, welcome.
I'm sorry, what?
Welcome.
Oh, thank you. The public health emergency has been going on for 18 months. It is time for the county commissioners to put an end to the governor's health emergency. COVID-19 is 99.7% survivable and curable. The shot that are, that people are getting is not a vaccine. It's a shot that does not prevent you from getting or spreading COVID. People have died from getting the shot, have died, but have, people have not only died from getting the shot, but have died from COVID after having all the shots. These shots are CDC-approved only for experimentation and goes against the Nuremberg Code. Using this shot as an experiment on humans is a crime against humanity and should be subject to an official investigation. Studies from the Mayo Clinic have come to the conclusion that when ivermectin is given in the early, early in mild or moderate COVID cases, reduces mortality by 90%. The World Health Organization has known this fact, but refused to use it and are burying the fact. Not notifying the public on cures for the virus is a crime. Most of the people that died didn't have to. This is all about control and making money and that is sick. I have given you an article on ivermectin and the World Health Organization with references. I hope you'll take the time to read it. I found it interesting that Bill Gates is the second-largest funder of the World Health Organization. Hence, Bill Gates decides how the respective money is spent. Bill Gates priorities have become the World Health Organization priorities. If you look at the American Frontline Doctors website, you will see that they say, what they say about ivermectin. They have been silenced for a reason. Ivermectin is an approved drug and inexpensive. Let's start curing people and remove the governor's public mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Let's see, we have David Fossum, followed by Janet Butcher.
I have Donald Fossum.
I'm sorry, Donald Fossum.
Thank you.
And we'll note for the record that Nate Edwards is now in chambers.
May I have the overhead, please?
There it is. There we go. Good morning, everybody. I bring you the cure with terms, terms of endearment because I wouldn't demonize you. I happen to have a crush on one of your board members. And it's not you, Vaughn. So I've got, I've got, she kind of stole my, my thunder here on the long story on ivermectin. So I'm just going to tell you my cute little experience with travel and how we use our masks for opportunity. I use my mask for opportunity to go from one checkpoint to another. And I suspect that you are using the masks for the big pot of gold that's on top for money to flow to you for your compliance. And that pot of gold is not gold. It's incurable freaking debt. And you're catering to that. Now, the, the good part of my story is this. I had a lot of fun going from checkpoint to checkpoint on my flight and trip last week for my birthday. So in many cases, I didn't wear my mask most of the time. And people look at me in these precious situations like the airport, the airplane, the this, the that, and the everywhere else we're supposed to wear them and they go, "Wow, can I do that?" I'm going, "Hell, yeah, you can do that because it's unconstitutional for us to be ordered into them." So I'm standing at the end of a ramp waiting for my daughter to come down on our rendezvous flight and a little cute little gal comes skipping down the aisle. She gets a kick out of me not wearing a mask. We get into a wonderful conversation and she whips these out. You know what this is? This is ivermectin. Big deal. People are running around wild with it, right? Those who can get it, you know why they're doing it? Just like the lady before me. It's the cure. It's the solution. We shouldn't have to be going through all this BS of control and losing our liberties over something that can be controlled and there's a very low mortality rate on it. I go around telling people not about the big numbers, how curable. That's a 99%. They're brainwashed into thinking that big numbers are fearful to people. I go around saying 0%, 1%, 5% and give them what it fall, what goes in order with. And they go, "Really?" I go, "Really." I'm 76 years old. I've said it before, I'm totally unqualified to be here based on the fact I shouldn't have survived. I go to Trump rallies, I, or I did. I go to other large rallies. I go to big meetings all the time. We don't wear freaking masks. I've had COVID probably twice. One of the times I blamed it on my cat for an allergy, found out later, no, it was COVID again. All right? What did I do for it? Not much. Rested. And I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Janet Butcher, followed by Nicholas St. John.
Welcome, Ms. Butcher.
Good morning. Last week, I talked about the fact that the stock market for the pharmaceuticals is going through the roof. So we know what this is all about. It's to push, the pharmaceuticals are pushing this to, to, to give these shots. It's not a vaccine yet. It has not been deemed as a vaccine. It is an experimental shot. And now we, they are promoting to give it to children as young as five years old. It's at the point now where this, this has gone on way too long. And, and it, it breaks my heart that some of the people last year who were essential workers, they were vital to the survival of this community and now they're being ostracized, fired from their positions because they will not take an experimental drug. That's about all I've got to say. There's just not much more. You guys have heard it 10 times over. It is time to move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas St. John, followed by Donna Robinson.
Welcome, Mr. St. John.
For the record, Nicholas St. John, I'm here yet again because there's still been no redress of our grievances. We've been showing up here since December 15th. According to the oath that you guys have taken and the constitutional First Amendment, it says that you guys are under obligation and duty to redress our grievances. Not once have I been contacted by anyone from this committee or anyone to talk about nor bring together any of the panels that we've requested. So again, I'm going to demand that you convene a scientific panel to present scientific evidence and facts for maintaining that Washoe County should remain under an unconstitutional state of emergency with the doctors from the health, health district and two or three panelists of the choice of we, the people. The deaths to population of Washoe County is just 0.22%. Under what authority do you maintain that with such a low death toll that Washoe County should remain under a state of emergency and that you have denied even a discussion of putting a resolution on the agenda? We also demand that you, you take natural immunity, which the Cleveland Clinic has published, has published a study of and indicated that if you have natural immunity where you've recovered from COVID, it is better than a vaccine. Even though, as others have stated, this really truly isn't a vaccine. It doesn't keep you from getting infected. It doesn't even be, keep you from getting infected or becoming contagious. It doesn't even keep you from getting really sick and dying. As stated before, in the, in India, they talked about ivermectin in India. They only have a 3% vaccine, vaccination rate, yet they have one of the lowest cases, a case counts of COVID. Why do you suppose that is? It's because they're also the largest maker of ivermectin. They widely distribute it out to their, whatever it is, 1.1 or 1.2 billion population. They should have a skyrocketed case count. If you try to compare their numbers to even Washoe County, it looks like nobody's getting infected in India. So we also are asking for a prohibit, prohibition of the vaccine passport, which no one's addressed here as well. And also, we're asking for an amendment for the second, for Washoe County become a Second Amendment sanctuary county, which I have over 2,000 people have already signed the petition asking for that. We demand that the county stop counting cases and report hospitalizations only. Cases are subject to manipulation as Health Officer Dick boasted that cases increased because testing increased. Hello, does that make any sense?
Thank you.
Donna Robinson, followed by Melanie Sutton.
Welcome, Ms. Robinson.
Janice, I will email these photos to you.
Okay.
Can I have the overhead, please? Thank you. I don't know if you can zoom in on that. Donna Robinson, for the record, I'm a Lemon Valley resident. And as you know, I was a flood victim in 2017 and I've spoken in front of this commission multiple times. I want to thank the workers that were out the other night that worked tirelessly to help us keep our properties not to flood. However, I am appalled at the leadership of this commission and the road department for not coming out and listening to the residents. This photo right here is from Sunday when it was raining hard. For 24 hours, we got nearly four inches of rain in Lemon Valley alone. Okay? I hope you can hear me. I had COVID earlier this month and I'm protecting myself. This is facing Idaho and Tupelo. Look at those weeds. That homeowner, she has, she has health problems. She can't go out and clean out her own ditches. She put in three work requests this summer. She called them yesterday. "Oh, we're sorry, our spray truck broke down." "Excuse me, they're dead. They need to be removed." This is a ditch near my house. Again, clogged up. The water can't run. This is this morning. That is Idaho and Tupelo. Look at those weeds. Why weren't they cleaned out? You guys knew about this storm for a week. You know this is a problem intersection. Why aren't the road department out there making sure that that's clear so it can flow? Homeowners had to go out in the middle of the night or in the morning to try and pull weeds out of there. I called Jeanne, I called Dave Solerno. I said, "This is a problem where our properties are going to start flooding because you can't clean out weeds that we put requests in four months prior." This is facing down Idaho towards Lemon this morning. Really? How does water flow through that? Again, that's coming down from Sitka to Tupelo on Idaho. Yo, we'll clear off Lemon Drive. Screw the side ones that the water actually has to flow down to get to the pumps. Come on, people. You knew that this storm was coming for a week and nobody touched that intersection. We are tired of being left out. Do what's right and protect the homeowners.
Please.
Melanie Sutton. Melanie Sutton, followed by Cindy Martinez.
Okay, we've been coming here for about a year now, asking for you guys to end the public health emergency. And if my calculation is right, we're on day 602 of the public health emergency. It was supposed to be 15 days to flatten the curve. We are asking or demanding a resolution, including the following. Ban COVID vaccine mandates for the county, city, and other employees as well as citizens. Ban vaccine passports and any, and all means, methods of verifying of medical status for the citizens for the purposes of participating in society. Vaccine verification has no other purpose than to, to construct a two-tiered society resulting in discrimination based upon the medical status. Include education, this is the most important thing. Include education for the citizens regarding the prevention and protocols, preventive protocols and strengthen their immune system. This should have been number one, but no, you guys want to get rid of hydrochloroquine and ivermectin. The county commissioners in the Washoe Health District has failed to provide simple education regarding good health practices with regard, regard to COVID-19 crisis. It is apparent evidence of, lost my spot. Can you neglect, sorry, of duty of the part of the county elected representatives as well as the unelected bureaucrats making the implement health policies affecting the lives of Washoe County citizens. And we would also like you guys to clear the voter rolls of ineligible voters, establish an in-person voting with paper ballots and require voter ID. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Martinez, followed by Erin Massengill.
Good morning, Cindy Martinez, for the record, 27-year resident of Washoe County. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. I would like to know what this commission and when this commission is going to do something about strengthening voter integrity. We are asking that you clear the voter rolls of ineligible voters. There is evidence of, I think, almost 40,000 ineligible voters who are on the rolls. That must be remedied. This commission has the power to establish in-person voting with paper ballots. You don't have to go with the legislation passed at the legislature. We don't have to do mail-in ballots. Those are absolutely vulnerable to fraud. We want to see that remedied. And require voter ID. This county commission can establish voter ID. It's interesting that there are municipalities and agencies across this country that are demanding vaccine passports to get a hamburger, but decry voter ID as racist. I would heartily disagree with that. This commission needs to ban COVID-19 vaccine mandates, ban vaccine passports, eliminate and ban mask mandates, establish education for citizens regarding preventive protocols to strengthen their immune systems. And the county, the county commission has failed to do that. The other thing I would say is that if, unless you're living under a rock, Governor Jay Inslee of Washington has established mandatory vaccination for the population. Medical kidnapping is inbound. If you look, see what's happening in New Zealand and Australia. Similarly, Governor Murphy of New Jersey has just been outed as hiding his intent to establish and require mandatory vaccinations for New Jersey citizens until after he's elected. Thankfully, Project Veritas has illuminated that. I've been on the record about my stance about the COVID-19 issue, the pandemic. I think what's being characterized right now as COVID infections is actually vaccine injuries. And then the last thing is I want to state very loudly and emphatically is that this county commission needs to appoint a representative of the people to the vacated Senate 16 seat, vacated by Ben Kiekeffer, who by no measure is a conservative. And hereby, I am strongly endorsing the appointment of Melissa Clement, who is a conservative to her core and represents the interest of the people and will be a constitutional voice for our interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Next up, we have Erin Massengill.
Good morning. I'm going to once again ask that we agendize and pass a resolution to ban vaccine passports, any verification of medical status to prevent modern-day segregation and discrimination. I am also going to request that we pass a resolution, which you guys have a copy of, regarding nutritional protocol so that we can create actual optimal health in our community since that is what seems to be what we are allegedly concerned with. I would also like to ask that we end the public health emergency. Obviously, we're not in one. I'm honestly baffled that many of us are here every week and have been so for quite some time and the board refuses to take a stance. It really does show that you're not willing to make a move that's for the people for the people that are here actually voicing their concerns. Lastly, I'm going to end with a quote from Robert F. Kennedy Jr. Governments love pandemics. They love pandemics for the same reason they love war. It gives them the ability to impose controls on the population that the population would otherwise never accept creating institutions and mechanisms for orchestrating and opposing obedience. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I, I have emails to place on the record from Stephen Coppola and Elise Wetherly.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right, seeing no other public comment, we will close public comment at this time and take us back, Mr. Manager, to item number three. I believe Ms. Gatske has arrived.
She has arrived. So item three is an appearance and presentation by Holly Gatske, UNR Cooperative Extension regarding the annual report that will include the extension program activities and fiscal information for the year. Ms. Gatske.
Ms. Gatske, welcome. Nice to see you again. We saw you just a few weeks ago in, in Fallon.
Right. Thank you so much. I, I appreciate, my apologies. There was some kind of total tie-up on the freeway. But we're here and I would like to have the slide presentation, if possible, put up. Oh, it is there, sorry. Looking at the wrong screen, my apologies. Okay, so this is just a, a simple reporting of what extension has been up to in the last year. I'd just like to let you know how it works or what we've been up to in the last year. The basic story is, wait a minute. Turning it on helps. There we go. Okay, so just as a background, and most of you all know this already, but extension identifies critical needs in the community and designs educational programs and activities to address those needs. Extension provides ongoing program evaluations. We evolve and change and improve to the best of our abilities. And we use the Advilarm Tax to focus on six major areas of work, community economic development, youth, personal, family development, horticulture, health and nutrition, natural resources, and agriculture. There we go. Sorry, it's a bit slow today. The literacy and school readiness is, you also have a brochure and you can follow along if you want. It's largely following that. But basically, this is our program where we have education going to three-to-five-year-olds and their families. We include both so that they can learn basic skills. We sneak in some health and, and studies about health or information about health. But the goal is, is to get these children ready and to succeed in school. So it prepares them for school readiness. And we were able to reach with our program last year, teaching them about health, STEM, and basics for school to 8,170 Spanish and English-speaking families through direct education, social media, policy systems, and environmental. So we approach it multiple different directions, had success. So, we approach it multiple different directions, had success. Just some research behind this shows that if we can help one child stay healthy and be successful in school, and they start their lives in that way, it can often, on average, save over 20,000 estimated costs in education, medical, and incarceration. The idea is, start young, get them on the right track. There we go. Horticulture is another major program we have running. We have nursery workers being, getting certificates. We had 56 this last year, and we had 295 green industry workers who provided post-program continuing education. This certificate is wanted by nurseries, landscaping companies, because they know that somebody that's gone through our classes know proper procedures and systems to be able to do things well. We also had 114 Hispanic workers do our landscaping class. We have a water efficiency landscaping class. We only had 10 people do that. COVID's causing a little twist in some of our programs, but we're still evolving and going. We had 424 Washoe residents take the Grow Your Own Nevada, so they learned how to grow their own food for consumption. And our master gardeners volunteered to over 1,000 residents answering gardening questions. You can come into our office on Energy Way, or you can send in inquiries phone. We had 35 new master gardeners certified in the last year. And basically, we've been reaching over 2,000 people with different classes they help us with. Now I have a... Now I've gone three. So, the next one, when I get to it, is 4H Youth Development. There we go. It is basically our biggest program. This includes 4H, but it's far more than that. So, there's 4H clubs, but we also run a lot of STEM programming right in Title I schools in Washoe. We reached 1,891 youth through STEM after-school programs. We had 5,562 youth impacted by youth school enrichment programs. We won... We run... I can't talk today either. We run STEM and STEAM day camps. So, when the kids are out of school for breaks, we run day camps so that their parents can still continue going to school, and yet these kids grow and develop and have fun at the same time, learning in our programs. We had 43 virtual instruction programs online to deal with those situations. We run 215 youth in our 4H clubs, and we had short-term interest programs for 395 youth. To adapt and deal with the situations these days, we created Facebook and STEM videos and other social media. 62 of those videos went out, and we've already had 5,391 total views on those types of things. So, we've gone digital, tried to make them short snippets so that people can get them connected to their kids when it works. I do, I will be honest in that our programs, we're seeing that we went virtual with COVID part-time. We've stayed in-person as much as possible and continue to do that and building that. We're finding a fatigue with the videos, or not the videos, the videos seem to still be running well, but the virtual classes are dropping off, so we're adapting and figuring out how to reach... Usually, our best reach, because we're dealing with disadvantaged communities, is in-person and doing things right with the youth. We've been in several locations that have had trouble getting access, and we've taken the computers purchased, and we've had them on, in-person so that youth can come in, experience things on computers, but more importantly, catch up on their schoolwork if they need and get some assistance. So, we've provided more access with the help you guys provided. The volunteers help us do all of this, and there was 395 volunteers helping us in Washoe County, and that is a huge value to the program. I'm definitely having trouble with this clicker today. Okay, nutrition education. Basically, this has been a little slower. It's hard to get out and deal with people in-person, but we've still had in-school nutrition education classes. Produce Pick of the Month is a class where we actually go in, teach kids about healthy snack choices, being produce, and have some fun with it. They learn the science behind it, and the important thing is, is to create healthy eating habits within the youth at a young age and develop them and go through. So, those are also in high-risk elementary schools, and 941 children were impacted there. Summer camps were ran to teach healthy living in the Reno Housing Authority sites, and we were at two farmers' markets, helping participants at those farmers' markets get a free affordable food recipe, free affordable food recipe, that's hard to say, recipes, nutrition information, and to know where they can go to use their SNAP/EBTs. Living with Fire. Just so you know, Living with Fire is definitely one of our big programs and has had huge impact again this year. Within Washoe, we distributed 13, over 1,300 publications. We had 12 Zoom workshops, which reached 730 attendees. Those have been working well. We're going back to YouTube recordings, and we've actually got a blog running that's working really well, and you can go back and view those. Within Washoe, we had a Sparks Community Zoom Workshop, which 52 residents learned the importance of evacuation preparedness. We had a town hall meeting series with the 2016 Little Valley Fire residents and the owners of the land, or the managers of the land around that, to reestablish relationships, discuss projects that have occurred, and talk about next steps for wildfire rehabilitation. We've had a conference online, and the newest thing that we're doing is a series within the high schools, and this is being very well started up. We've got it starting in Washoe, but we're going across northern Nevada. And this is an education series that we'll be working on, teaching teens wildfire, protection from wildfire, and wildfire-related careers. It's being piloted as we speak. It's a new curriculum, and we're very excited about this because we find there's a fear out there of how to deal with fire, what does it mean, and that they can do something, even as teens, to make a difference, to be more resilient at their homes and in our environment, in the forests and surrounding areas. So, educating young is really important. One of the things that we have been done that was proactive during all the fires is we've put out a couple publications. The last two, one was about living with the smoke and providing some practical information for the public on how to do that. And we just released one a touch earlier than we planned, but how to deal with flood after fires, because it is a real risk. As you know, one of the things that we're growing, and after talking to you all about, is developing an Unsheltered Persons Program. It's being stubborn for me. Basically, we've hired Jose Gomez on, and as you know, he's been around talking to your staff. He's been building relationships with community groups that engage with the homeless programs, and he's been working, wrapping his mind around, I think he spends a lot of time with Alexis, wrapping around, okay, where are the actual needs? Who's covering what? We don't want to overlap with anybody. We want to use our time and energy, and especially the tax money wisely. But just as a first step, besides getting relationships built, getting an understanding of what truly is happening on the ground and figuring out what works, we started an after-school program at our place, two days a week. We're quite excited about that in that that is allowing those residents that are there to go out and rebuild their abilities to find careers, maybe even get employed, and at the same time know that after school, their kids have somewhere practical and safe to go to. We'd like to expand that because we see big value to five days a week because that would provide more opportunity. That's something that we'll continue to work on, but we're quite excited about that because what we discovered is, the youth that have been coming are more, actually, middle schoolers to our surprise. We're used to dealing with elementary. That's fine. We flipped out and put out our Health Rocks program to those and mixed up the curriculum. Health Rocks is an education series on healthy living, dealing with the science behind what happens to your brain as you grow and develop, and what happens if you do vaping, if you do drugs, if you alcohol. And so, they learn a lot of that in a really fun way, and it helps be preventative in the future with them having real information to take care of. So, we have discovered that we will be developing classes, and Jose's working on that right now, in personal care, career intervention, and basic technology skills. The reality is, is that if you don't have your ability to go onto a computer, and a lot of our homeless people are struggling with that, they can't function in this world these days. So, that's why we have basic technology skills. The other things are finding out basic life skills that are needed and helping them where they're at. So, we'll be developing that curriculum. He's working on it right now, and we're going to be hiring on another person. So, Jose and another person will be going out and teaching right on-site and starting to work on those things. So, with that, that is basically our summary for programs, and I'm just going to give you, if I can get it up, a summary of the fiscal behind that. So, the funds that we get from taxes are on the left-hand side. We had an opening balance of 1.7. Revenue was 1.6. Expenses were 1.375. We're a little behind because of the unique situation in our world right now. So, we have increased on our funding balance, but we have serious plans to move forward, build the homeless program, do things like that to address that. Just so you know, the total extension expenditures in Washoe County, there's the county funds that you provided, there's the federal funds and state, but we've worked really hard to do some sponsored projects, represents grants. And that's the grants that we brought in was 1.35 million. And then we have other donations and such of 283, which is a total budget of $3.4 million of activity happening in Washoe County. With that, any questions of extension in Washoe County?
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioners, I don't have anyone signed in. Does anyone have any questions from Ms. Gatski? Commissioner Herman, I know you're a great supporter of 4H. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Yes, I am, sir. And I wanted to thank you for your hard work and providing all these services to families and children especially. So, I will support you, you know, as I always have.
I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate the support and the direction.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for this great presentation. I think you're doing wonderful work in our community, and it's so diverse. So, it's exciting that we're getting the word out about what you're doing, and however Washoe County can support you in, you know, spreading the news about your classes or, you know, helping you, you know, get new people involved, just let us know. But the amount of volunteers that are involved is just stunning to me. That's incredible, and they all have a dollar value on them. So, the fact that you're able to really engage the community in your work is really great. And it's been wonderful to work with Jose, and I can't wait to see all these classes and see the outcomes of them. So, looking forward to that report as well. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. We look forward to building the programs and growing and figuring out how to do it best together because we know it'll take a little bit of navigating to get some successful programs with the unsheltered, but we're determined to do it. Great.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. And, oh, Commissioner Herman, Commissioner Hill, forgive me. Ms. Gatski, I mean, your program is just, it's so widespread. There's, you're touching so many different lives. One thing that I wanted to mention to you, which you may not be aware of, I, along with this commission, established a program called the YES Grant, which is Youth Engaged in Service and Youth Engaged in Science. And it's a grant program, and it's administered through the Community Foundation of Western Nevada. And I would encourage some of your students who are engaged in service projects to apply for those grants. You can help them move through the process of how to go through the application process and obtain those grants, but they are there specifically for our youth. And there is no, there's no floor. So, in other words, I've had second graders apply and get them all the way up to, all the way through college, you know, kids who are, I say kids, you know, folks who are working on their doctorate degrees can apply for the Youth Engaged in Science portion if they're doing something that benefits our community. So, I would highly recommend that you look at those because they are there, and it is a fund that is available to any one, schoolteachers or programs just such as yours in our community. And I want to also thank you for how often you're out in the community. I mean, I see you, I see you all the time, you know, and when I, it's not necessarily during COVID, it's not this, but I hear about you being out there, and so you have great successes, and I just, I thank you for the hard work.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I feel it, most important people to get out there is the staff that are in the office, but I appreciate that you're hearing and seeing people doing things, so that's really important. And thank you for the grant information. I think that's our goal, is to grow youth, to be better individuals and society members. And so, this type of proposal would be something we'd really encourage the youth that we're working with to grow and build. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other questions for Ms. Gatski? Okay, and I know Mr. Lucy doesn't have any. So, thank you so much for being here. We will close item number three, and that takes us to item number five. Mr. Manager, would you take us into that?
Item five is a presentation and update on FY 2021-22 First Quarter Status Report for the Washoe County Regional Detention Facility to include security of the jail, conditions of confinement, staffing and medical care of inmates housed at Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and acknowledged receipt of the report.
Thank you. Chief Deputies, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Manager, Vice Chair, County Commission. Jeff Clark, for the record, Chief Deputy of the Washoe County Jail. I'd like to introduce one of our captains of the Washoe County Jail, Ralph Caldwell, and he will be presenting the first quarter report this morning. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you.
Or Captain Caldwell, forgive me.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioners. Just became a captain on August 30th. This will be my first time presenting to this panel in this capacity, and I look forward to a long working relationship. One of the primary objectives of the sheriff in his obligations under statute in running a facility is seeing to the welfare of inmates under his custody. That includes, of course, their physical health, having proper and constitutional access to medical care, keeping them free of exposure to diseases and vermines as much as we can through protocols, providing adequate food, a comfortable environment so far as temperature, freedom from excess moisture, other discomforts, their physical safety, and having the ability to come out of their cells, interact with each other, as well as staff and meaningful programming. One of the greatest challenges the sheriff has encountered in providing for these, one moment, I'm having the same issue with the clicker, of course, has been the COVID situation. This sheriff and his designees have been proactive in addressing threats to the inmate and the staff posed by COVID. That has involved the cancellation of in-person contact visits for inmates, as well as our transporting of inmates outside of the facility for appearances at court and other appointments. We have been and continue to educate our population on the needs for personal hygiene, distancing, and adherence to our masking guidelines when out of their cells. We've encouraged their access and usage of our medical staff by waiving assessment fees. When inmates are either symptomatic and or testing positive for COVID, we have the structural capacity to isolate them from general population to prevent spreads. There are additional screening by medical staff to look for symptoms commonly associated with COVID-19 infection. We have managed our tier time, which means them out of themselves, interacting, using the visiting booths, in order to enable social distancing between inmates so they're not encountering anybody that they don't absolutely have to. All inmates are being tested, and they are all assigned masks and directed to where them went out of cells. To that end, we have had 61 positive infections through our own contact tracing efforts, likely likely transmitted within the facility. There have been 10 that we have received that we've had to maintain custody of that we've known to be positive for COVID. Our testing, as of this, the writing of this report was 130 inmates voluntarily testing or testing as a precondition to in-person court appearances. And we have had 71 tests positive. And you can see the total there. As of this morning, we had five positive in custody. So we haven't seen spill over or a spread within the facility, partially due to the sheriff's proactive mitigation efforts. Well, that wasn't supposed to happen. Okay. Any inmate who wants to partake in the COVID shots is welcome to and encouraged to do so. Moderna has been the available one that we've administered. You can see 115 doses there. The inmates that we have, 95 of them are identified as high-risk. That is the comorbidities associated with bad outcomes from a COVID infection. Obviously, we have no control over the age group that we have. NAFCARE is our contracted medical provider. They've been in partnership with sheriff's staff in seeing to the inmates' medical needs. To that end, you can see the numbers before you. They screen everyone who shows up at our facility at differing levels of engagement based on how likely we are to be responsible for them in housing and long-term care. They provide numerous mental health, physical health evaluations. Some inmates come to us pregnant and they have their own unique medical challenges that they, we meet. The CIWA and COWS monitoring addresses opioid and alcohol dependency issues that are identified upon receipt of the inmates and medical and care plans are drafted in accordance with needs identified in that screening. We give out a lot of medications. We give out a lot of mental health medications. Of those inmates that you see represented in the 500-some-odd numbers based on the quarter, that's in order to get them cooperative, able to function, conduct tier time and interact in some sort of a positive social environment. And not all of them, we can medicate up to that level and we house them appropriately and have a team of deputies dedicated to programming and interacting with those inmates to the best ability we can get them.
Before you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Before, before you go away from that slide, will you define CIWA monitoring and COWS?
That's, that's opioid dependency monitoring.
What's it stand for? What's that acronym?
Do you know the actual acronym?
I don't, we won't get that.
Yeah.
I can get that for you.
We throw around a lot of acronyms in, in government and it confuses most of us until we get used to them. And, and it certainly confuses the public. So yeah, that would, that would be wonderful if you could.
We always look at those, Commissioner, is CY is alcohol. The last acronym stands for alcohol and then CALS score or CALS monitoring.
Is that a Y or a W? It looks like a C-I-W.
It's CIWA. So that stands for alcohol, CYW. And then CALS score or CALS monitoring is opiate monitoring. And the O stands for the opiates.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
I'll have you that this afternoon.
Sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I just, it's, it's not an acronym that I'm familiar with.
I can't get much more on the spot than I am right now. It's absolutely fine. Anything else for this slide, Commissioners?
No, thank you. I apologize, Captain.
And I'm sorry, if I'm droning on, you do have a question.
No, 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 this is, this is important stuff. We, we, please.
Okay. Another one of our challenges for the quarter medically has been providing dialysis. In several quarters and years, we, we might have one inmate who has a couple of dialysis appointments. We actually had at one point, three inmates hospitalized for dialysis treatment and providing that. We were able to, again, work with NAFCARE and have them partner with yet another third-party vendor to provide for an adequate and sustainable dialysis plan for these inmates that doesn't require hospitalization and then subsequent man-hours for guarding them in the hospital. Dental care is provided in-house unless it's something that can't be met, but there are dental facilities in our infirmary. Very active medical staff. You can see by the amount of medical chart reviews. Mental health professionals conduct a great deal of our visits. Sometimes that's for routine visits. Sometimes it's screening and people being released from suicide watch, which we trust to a licensed mental health care provider to tell detention commission staff that we no longer need to take suicide precautions against certain inmates. When inmates complain of medical complaints beyond the capacity to be treated in-house, we, we err on the side of caution and provide transportation or have REMZA transport them to a suitable emergency to room to address their current medical concerns. As you can see, we've done several of those over the course of this quarter that I'm reporting on. Upon discharge or release, inmates are given a care plan for them to follow up with. Of course, it's outside of our ability to enforce or even oversee that by and large. Some inmates are referred for, go ahead. Oh, sorry about that, thank you. Some inmates referred for mental health or other physical needs to conduct follow-up with whatever provider they can access based on their situations. You see also, we occasionally refuse inmates medically. If, if they come to us with a health condition that we will not be able to meet by housing them in our facility, or perhaps they've been in a vehicle accident and the arresting officer hasn't had them seen and cleared by a licensed medical provider, they will get turned away. And that's in order to prevent undue liability on the part of the sheriff's office to providing needs that we just know we can't meet at the outset. It's always a challenge for us to manage our population in a way that we only have a few special watch cells where someone who is dead-set on harming themselves, we have housing conditions and certain monitoring conditions that we're able to apply to those inmates. But it's, there's only so many cells available. We are adding two more by converting intake cells. If you've been in our facility, the ones with the bars and the sliding doors, we're changing those to be more adequate in order to prevent suicide attempts and completions. And part of that has been driven by the, over the last four years, the 300% increase in our mental health population for housed inmates. With 13 suicide attempts, we're very proud of the fact that there have been no effective completions under our watch. Averted attempts, that can range from someone actively tying a ligature around their own neck to making statements to a deputy or, or other provider saying what someone is going through. We also proactively screen everybody who comes back from court with a serious sentence or other kind of a life-changing outcome. And those are also averted attempts that we can consider. Our bunk project that you see referenced up here is further hardening of our facility to prevent any points where inmates can tie off ligatures in order to attempt suicides. That's, that's a project that's going to further eliminate opportunities. And that's part of, sometimes just making an inmate work a little harder or take more time to think about what they're doing allows us to get them the referral and the help that they will need to get through the crisis that they're experiencing. A big challenge facing the sheriff's office is our average daily population. If, if everything was perfect in detention, we could house 1,302 inmates if every bunk could be used. However, not every bunk can be used because we can't always double up inmates. Sometimes they have to be housed individually for a myriad of reasons. At the 1,075, I can tell you as of this morning and for the last several days, we've been over 1,080. I don't know what the trend lines hold necessarily and a lot of that is out of our control. You can, you'll see in later slides. Our most recent high-water mark was the 1819 fiscal year. If we start to trend back towards the numbers for bookings and average daily population we were seeing in that timeframe, then our facility may not be up to the task of housing them, especially based on the explosion or the increase of mental health inmates that aren't always suitable for cellmates. Stay, if we stay at the 1,050 average daily population, that would be a relief. Obviously, the, the 20-year was about a bit of an oddball and it's kind of hard to make valid predictions with that in our last couple of years because it was such an anomaly of a year when it comes to public safety and just basic human behavior. A good indicator of what the sheriff's challenges will be for housing is our bookings. On a, on a good quarter, we'll book well over 1,000 inmates that are brought to us by the multiple agencies that use our facility to hold their arrestees. For the quarter that I'm reporting on, the average bookings are just around 1,300. That compares favorably to the fiscal year 1819, but not as well to 1920. Again, that being such an anomaly. It's hard to determine what our trend line's going to be over any kind of a meaningful length of time. Next slide just shows our bookings and the four-year average. So comparing this quarter for this year to the last four years, trying to compare like to like as much as we can because there are seasonal changes. The summer will have a certain amount of expectations. There will be events in those, in those months, such as hot August nights, where we will see an uptick. And so this is a meaningful way to evaluate what our booking trend is going to look like. Average length of stay, we do everything we can to give inmates access to owner cognizance releases, get them in front of a judge for a judge owner cognizance release. And we encourage contact with friends and family to post bail, trying to lower the average length of stay. So ideally, we only house people who absolutely can't be released back outside of anything we, we have control over. It is trending upwards and it does exceed what we saw for our high-water mark in 1819. The factors contributing to that aren't reported in this presentation. Be happy to look into them if that is a question you folks have. Again, comparing like to like, this, this quarter that I'm reporting on is significantly higher than previously, previous quarters. Another dimension of inmate safety is the amount of fights that take place. For the quarter, 19 inmates fought with other inmates. And for 10 instances where inmates decided to fight with staff, we're very pleased with the fights averted because it means no injury was brought about, no criminal charges had to be brought to bear, and everybody was safer. That involves deputies being proactive, interacting with inmates, being open and available to receive communications from some of the residents, also being observant of pre-attack indicators such as body language, grouping, inmates moving, trying to put themselves in positions of advantage against each other. Zero in-custody deaths for the quarter. Comparing our jail fights again for this quarter, they, they are higher than we have seen historically. Except, of course, for the 1819 fiscal year. So as long as we don't get back to those days, I think we'd all be very happy. Our detention services unit is a team of deputies whose main goal and thrust is to connect inmates in custody with services and programs either while they're in jail or upon release of jail. They will help them develop the life skills and talents to stay out of jail further. To that end, they are in communication with inmates either by emails or kites and with, and they work with the courts, trying to divert and get inmates into programs. That selfishly has a fiscal benefit in that we are not housing an inmate who is in a program being treated as well as delaying their next booking. We've saved several thousand days by getting inmates out of a custodial environment into a more restorative environment, which also provides for cost savings because housing inmates is a very expensive business. We've saved $807,000 this quarter. It's, it's a work in progress. Some of the staffing levels for our DSU have, they've been drawn down to work the actual secured facility when we don't have enough deputies working around the inmate population just to house them. But the sheriff has made that a priority.
Just to follow up on your last question, Commissioner, CY, CIWA stands for Clinical Institute Withdrawal Assessment. Clinical Institute Withdrawal Assessment. And the CALS score is, stands for Clinical Opiate Withdrawal Scale.
Okay.
So they're both the scaled numbers of where they're at in that assessment.
Good, yeah, and I have some questions, some follow-up questions that I'll ask here in just a moment. Commissioners, Commissioner Hill, I have you sign in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this report. And I, I have just a few questions on the timing of the bunk project. Do you, do you have an idea of when that will be completed?
I think it starts next week.
I believe it has been contracted. Obviously, as you know, Commissioner, we've been waiting long and hard for this contract.
Yeah.
But I do have a meeting after this with capital improvements.
Wonderful. I'm so excited for that project to be completed. So thank you for pushing that ahead and keep me updated, please.
The chief or I will be in touch with you this afternoon, ma'am.
Awesome, thank you. And then length of stay, I know when I was at the jail and Chief Deputy Clark gave me a tour, you were talking about that some of the inmates had more severe criminal backgrounds. And is that part of the reason that we have a longer length of stay? We're looking at that.
We are looking into it, as you know, and as past reported, we have 54 was the last count of number of inmates that have charges such as homicide. Homicide charges or above, that's 54 inmates. And we're also looking into possible bail reform and how that has changed over the last several years. And that may or may not have an effect on the population. But we definitely have a higher sentencing or a more severe charge population at the jail.
Okay, well, it would be great to hear what that final investigation is. And I really love your inmate assistance program and just any support that, you know, we can provide to your deputies who are doing it. I'm forgetting their names, who I've met. Could you remind me what their names are?
Deputy Kester.
Kester. And, you know, ensuring that we have availability of, you know, social workers for their disposal or any, any sort of other resources because I, I do think that there's a strong correlation with what you're doing and ensuring that people don't get back in custody and that we're making their stays shorter as well.
We're trying to continue that detention services unit. Obviously, you know that we're having severe staffing shortages. And, but with, with cooperation with, you know, all the county departments. We do have LCSW, a social worker on staff and we're trying to move these programs forward.
Great, great. And then I'm, I think that the infirmary is on the Senate appropriation bill moving forward, that $2.335 million for that. And so I know that we're not there yet. There's, we have to get that signed into law still, but we just, I'm thrilled that, you know, there's, we're looking at some federal funding for expanding that infirmary and because obviously by these statistics, it's needed.
And we are very thankful for this commission's support and certainly Senator Cortez Masto, who is, has just been so supportive of us in this project.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I don't know whether Commissioner Chairman Lucy wants to speak, but I'll, I'll wait here for just a second. But I'll chime in. I had an opportunity some weeks ago when NAFCARE's Brad McLean was in town and we had a, a great meeting. And it, and it, in my opinion, it was very fruitful. One of the conversations that we had was about some potential on, it's, it's very similar to the inmate assistance program, but, but what I asked was, do we have a program in place that follows inmates once they leave our facility that, that have been under drug and alcohol rehabilitation to ensure that they stay on that track and, you know, sort of continue to monitor them, help them, come beside them to assist in trying to, to limit recidivism? Just, you know, trying to, trying to make sure that, that they have the tools that they need? Because as both of you mentioned, not today, Chief Deputy, but, but you, Captain, it's very expensive to house an inmate. And you have mentioned this before, Chief Deputy. We've had this conversation not only here at the dais, but, but, you know, in person during my visits at the jail. at the jail. You know, if you can keep them out of the jail in any way, shape, or form, that's, I mean, that's the best course of action. And so...
NAF Care is a wonderful provider, sir, and we are working, based on those conversations with NAF Care. Obviously, it's challenging because they're a contracted provider at the jail, so they have certain contracted services that they provide.
Understood.
For the jail. Included in those services is a discharge planner, and it's really about connecting with the CARES campus and the other county entities.
Right, yeah, no, no, exactly. Yes, no, totally agree.
And so Mr. McLean is the CEO with NAF Care and has been a phenomenal partner. And so we are looking at how do we expand the tracking and ensuring that there's that continuity of care when an inmate leaves our facility, as, you know, we're very proud of the medication-assisted treatment program that we started at the jail, and how do we ensure that that continuity of care follows that inmate. And so we are working on that now, and hopefully in the upcoming quarterly reports, we'll be able to expand on some of those ideas and projects that we're working on.
And I'm sorry, no, forgive me.
Another example with NAF Care is Captain Caldwell mentioned the dialysis problems that we've had at the jail. We have three current inmates that are dialysis patients. And just as an example of how responsible NAF Care feels for our in custody inmates is they've put our dialysis provider on legal notice as far as breach of contracts because they weren't coming in and providing that care. We actually have had to take these inmates to the hospital to get that care.
Right.
So that's just another example.
Yeah, no, and I understand. It's not easy to dialyze a patient. It's very difficult. I actually have a very personal experience, and so I can only imagine the challenges that you guys are up against. But back on our conversation, if we can follow them through the system, I mean, the benefits for the county are multifaceted. If we can keep them out of our CARES campus, if we can keep them, you know, out of our place, if we can keep them out of the jail, if we can get them back to being productive for themselves, I mean, it's a win for everyone, including them, and mostly them, of course. And so I look forward to having these conversations about how the county can play a role, because sometimes, and we've talked about this in other venues, where sometimes you have to spend some money in order to save a whole bunch of money. And it's sad, but it's true. It's no different than any of the scenarios. We've talked about numerous scenarios up here from the dais, but in our own personal lives, you have to spend money to save money. And so I'm fully supportive of any types of conversations that you guys want to have, looking at some of the innovations and seeing what we can come up with to keep these folks on the right track, keep them clean, keep them sober, and get them back working. Lord knows, there's plenty of jobs out there.
Yes, sir.
We just have to make sure that they can get there on time and get them up, and once they're up and running, you know, away they go. So any other questions? So Commissioner Lucy or Vice Chair, Chairman Lucy has nothing. So if there's nothing else from the commission, we will close this item. This is for possible action. Mr. Edwards, would you like us to take public comment on this?
Yes, I believe that you need to because it's styled for action.
Okay, all right. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
I have nobody signed in on this item.
Okay, all right, we will close public comment. Commissioners, if you'll indulge me, I'm going to take us slightly out of order, and forgive me, Ms. Enfield. I'm going to, it was, this was sort of the way the agenda was supposed to be. I'm going to take us into item number seven, which is Commissioners and County Managers' Announcements. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item seven, and then we'll do item six afterwards?
Item seven is Commissioners and County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commissions' Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Agendas.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you have any such items?
I have none today, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, can you hear us? He may be out of range.
I can hear you, sir.
Okay, did you have any items for us this morning, Mr. Chair?
I do not.
Okay, thank you so much. You showed up on my screen. So Commissioner Hill, I have you signed in next. No? Okay, for whatever reason, everybody's coming up on my screen. Commissioner Herman, are you signed in?
I'm not, but it doesn't have a place to sign in on my today.
Okay, all right, go right ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Is my mic on? I hope it is. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. As a representative of the people in Lemon Valley, I, we had a public speaker from Lemon Valley who was very passionate about the service that they get in Lemon Valley as far as the, as far as the ditches being cleaned out and that sort of thing. This has been a long, long, long time of the same type of neglect, and I know that the county has got miles and miles and miles and miles of ditches, but when their ditches get full, bad things happen. So I just wanted to bring that back because I think it gets forgotten in the mix sometimes, and some people that maybe weren't here during the 2017 and also the 2015 floods in Lemon Valley. Just a reminder, we need to really, really take care of the people. I mean, during the rainstorm, I had dozens and dozens of calls from citizens there, and a lot of them were in a panic mode, I mean, flashbacks from the last time. So, and Mrs. Robinson, she is just getting over COVID and everything, but it was that serious of an item for her that she came from home, not feeling well, and came to speak to us. So, I mean, there's something to that. It's serious. One of my things I keep reminding us about and hoping that I can convince some of you about the importance of getting us out of this health emergency, so we have a power of choice, the freedom to decide on our own. It's causing a lot of problems. I believe we should have a resolution, and I don't know what it's going to take, but we need to start listening to some of the wisdom that's coming across. I mean, people wouldn't keep coming to meetings if there wasn't a serious problem. And financially, economically, constitutionally, we need to think about that. It's a very big concern of mine and a lot of other people. As far as some of the other comments that were made, I still agree with them that in order to make us look a little more solid and look like we know what we're doing as far as the election, I believe we need to do a little bit more to maybe make sure about our machines that count the votes and this sort of thing. Possibly, the ideas that are brought up here by the folks in the audience, I agree with paper ballots, you know, maybe eliminate the machines for a year or so, the next election cycle, until they have been either certified that they are, there is no such thing as any fraud going on. And just to make it look that we care enough to make the people feel satisfied that we did have a good election, and most of all, that we are going to have a good, solid, honest election. Okay, I'm done nagging, but I agree with the voter ID. I think that's a very important thing. Not that we have the power to do that right here, but it's a possibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Chairman Lucy?
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I do appreciate it. I did want to have a few things I do want to say to some of the public comment. Seventy-two hours was a very significant four when they measure these atmospheric rivers between...
Chair, you're breaking up.
Five. The one that we saw in 2017 was about a, all right, I'm sorry. I'll submit my comments hopefully later in the afternoon. Sorry, sir.
No, 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 it's all good. You're just, we're only hearing about every fourth or fifth word.
Okay, I will forego, and I will...
Actually, we can hear you now, so maybe you're in a clearer spot. You want to give it a go again?
Let me pull over here off to the road here for, I find a spot I can. But what I was saying, sir, is that we experienced in the last seventy-two hours in Washoe County a very unique event of rain and storm weather that impacted our other areas dramatically, not just to Commissioner Herman's point, in the North Valleys, with a significant amount of rain and standing water, but also in our higher elevations, masses of snow above five thousand feet. We have road crews still working in Incline Village at this very minute, still plowing individuals out of two to three feet of snow. So this was maybe, as pointed out, that we knew about it, to anticipate the outcome of this was, you were unable to really anticipate this amount of rain. And, but that doesn't change the idea that we should probably look into some sort of stormwater district or some sort of issue in North Valleys.
You're breaking, you're breaking again, Bob.
To see if we can address the stormwater, and I know, Vice Chairman, you've got a lot of experience with it. All right, I will, I'll just address it right now, sir.
No, 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 yeah, you sound like Max Headroom. I don't know whether you remember Max Headroom. Maybe I'm dating myself, sadly. But, yeah, we're only hearing about every fifth word, Bob. I apologize. So, and what I think the chairman was talking about, I'll try to jump in here, is, I mean, I'm fully supportive of talking about a stormwater utility all throughout the North Valleys and working collaboratively with the city of Reno because there's a lot of cross-boundary there. And so it's something we've talked about on Western Regional Water forever. I'm happy to have that conversation again. That said, what I have for us, I'm going to start with this. District sixteen, the applications are open, and the application process is open. I would encourage anyone who lives in District sixteen to apply. Rumors abound that myself, that I was applying. I don't live in District sixteen. Rumors are what rumors are. But it closes on October twenty-eighth at twelve PM, so at noon, October twenty-eighth, that's this Thursday at noon. If anyone is interested in filling that seat, we need an application on file, so I would encourage anyone who lives in District sixteen to please apply. Mr. Manager, you and I had a conversation about the definition of an underserved community, and I'm not sure whether any of us can truly define what an underserved community really means, because it can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. Wadsworth can be underserved because it doesn't have high-speed internet, and Gerlach could be underserved because they don't have the same type of ambulance service that might be available to even the folks in Wadsworth. So what I'd like to have, Mr. Manager, is I'd like to have a, maybe even just a workshop style of an item where we talk about what it means to be underserved and how can we address that. Underserved can also be food deserts, it can be, you know, something, it can be things to do with, the lack of being able to just go to the grocery store and buy groceries. There's, in many of these places, they just don't have those types of facilities. And then, of course, you know, we can talk about education, and we can talk about police and fire services, we can talk about all kinds of other things that come into play when we bring up underserved communities. So if that would be possible, Mr. Manager, I would love that. In that same vein, I would also like to involve EDON. I'm very appreciative of the work that EDON does to bring in businesses into our community, and I think that they've done a stellar job. But I think it's time that we have the conversation with EDON with respect to creating an incubator process to start building businesses right here. We have people, I mean, there's a whole lot of people out there who would like to be in business but need some help with small business development, and could employ two, three, four, five people as opposed to bringing in, you know, these sort of warehouse and other kinds of jobs that EDON, and that's not a pejorative comment, it's wonderful, but I would like to have a deeper conversation about an incubator process with them, and is there a way to work with UNR, because I know that UNR has business development processes in place as well. So that's what I have today. Did I knock anything loose for anyone? I know the chairman has some other stuff, but we'll have to wait for the very end of the meeting. Okay, all right, Mr. Manager. So that takes us back to item number six. Will you open that up for us?
Yes, item number six is a presentation and discussion by Gabriel Enfield regarding a status update for the state and local fiscal recovery fund grant of ninety-one million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars and thirty-eight cents, I'm sorry, and thirty, ninety-one point five million dollars, awarded to Washoe County pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Ms. Enfield is in chambers with us.
Sinfield, welcome.
Good morning.
And by the way, just for the record, Ms. Enfield was the, she's the one who created the Yes Grant program. I, you know, it was my concept, but she was really the one who put the whole thing together, so I want to publicly thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Your business. Good morning, Vice Chair, Chair, County Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a little update on the American Rescue funding. So we've been, we've had our website open for public comment to gather information and ideas from our residents on projects related to the needs of the community. We have received a few ideas. This is a brief list of the most identified ideas. Water and sewer came to the top. Roads were mentioned very often. Roads are actually not ARPA-eligible, but I did want to mention them because they were mentioned by the folks submitting ideas. Affordable housing also mentioned many times as well. Affordable housing also mentioned many times as well as parks and broadband. So we're going to leave this public comment open through the end of November, and we want citizens to provide us with ideas and comment on what projects they would like to see and believe are important to Washoe County with these funds for recovering from COVID. We're going to close this phase at the end of November because we expect to soon after that begin a process for our public applications for public projects that may be submitted by nonprofit entities throughout the community. So we don't want those to overlap. Over the past month, we have also, we've been working, rather than going out and doing a lot of our own public comment and, and gathering information and duplicating effort of the Governor's Office and the Treasurer's Office on ARPA funding. We've been working to go to the listening sessions that were being conducted throughout our community, and we continue to do that. We also, in order to leverage Washoe County's ARPA funding with the ARPA funding being received by the state of Nevada, we've submitted some projects to the state of Nevada's fund specifically for sewer and wastewater infrastructure, including a stormwater project and for broadband infrastructure, as well as infrastructure for behavioral health needs, transitional and affordable housing. The Governor's Office and Treasury is closing their submission for ideas and projects the end of this month. So the end of this week is, is closure for that process. As you know, the commissioners have approved nine point one million dollars of funding, and these are the same projects that were approved last month. No projects have come through since then. It's the eight point five million for the homeless services, four point five for Safe Camp, four for CARES Campus, and then a six hundred thousand dollar contract for WellCare for women with mental health needs housing. Meanwhile, for, over the last month, what we primarily have been doing is working through projects that were urgent throughout Washoe County, throughout our departments, specifically projects that were focused on public health or that met the needs of disproportionately impacted communities. And we currently have been going through just a little over ten million dollars worth of projects. And these are at various stages of review. So at this point, it's just a little over nineteen million dollars that's been identified for projects, twenty-one percent of our allocation. Just a summary of the projects that are currently under review for the Health District. We're, I'm submitted for a vehicle that is a mobile vaccination, vaccination clinic, as well as a command post that can be used for public health needs as well as any kind of pandemic current or future needs, as well as improvements for our technology infrastructure for Acela related to public health for the Sheriff's Office. Sanitation tower that efficiently sanitizes the space so that they can sanitize space when they're moving inmates from oneself. And that makes it much more efficient and much cleaner. As well as touchscreen throughout the facility for the detention facility. For the medical examiner, supplies, PPE, and frankly, that kind of equipment, as well as some contract staff and overtime and interim staffing for their needs related to COVID. Also for human services, we have, again, trying to focus on the one-time needs. Our place enhancements, these are some of the final needs to complete our place with landscaping, fencing, repairs. Some of those needs for the facilities there, as well as a community fence, fence around the community garden. We also needed to have a contract for kids cottage emergency beds due to some of the staffing issues at some of our other providers for youth beds and a couple of vehicles to transport children in care due to the changes and staffing issues that are being experienced at the, at Washoe County School District and causing complications with our transportation. We are looking at a lot of backlog cases with court system. So for the public defender staffing to address backlog as well as a, some remodel for that staff, and that's a twenty-four month. Again, equipment for district court to facilitate the audiovisual and also funding for relocation of the Family Peace Center as with COVID and with the operations of the courthouse. Everything has changed and made it complications related to the visitation center. The Family Peace Center is the visitation center for families that require supervised visitation. Also, the self, for Reno Justice Court, the Self-Help Center for assisting folks when they have to work on their own legal aid issues related to evictions and other court case items. See a little trend here with courts. Working on also, this is again, audiovisual, getting the courts up so that they're, all of their courtrooms have upgraded audiovisual so that they can conduct trials in court through Zoom or the audiovisual and be able to transcribe those and, and record those appropriately for remote hearings. And then, again, backlog cases for the District Attorney's Office, again, related to the court closures and the subgrant related to providing mental health services or evaluation for youth suicide in the schools. That's just a summary. These projects are all at various stages. Most of them have submitted through our process of submission. And then evaluated, we, all the projects will go through more of an expedited or abbreviated CIP or Job Evaluation Committee if there's staff involved. So we will maintain all of our internal processes while still working in an expedited way to make sure that these projects can get going quickly. I just wanted to quickly touch on the projects and the components of the projects that will be coming back to you for evaluation. So any project over five hundred thousand dollars will be, bring back for your approval. Also, subgrants to nonprofits will always come to the board for approval. Any staff positions that require the Job Evaluation Committee review will also come here for approval before any jobs are completed. And procurement of contracts over one hundred thousand dollars would also come back to the board for approval. There's another slide. So right now, our priority is to working to get staffed up. We have a position that was disclosed. We're going to begin interviewing probably next week for the Grants and Community Program Analyst. And having that person in place will get us ready to be able to start our community process and to support the implementation of the projects that I just showed you that will soon be moving towards implementation. Additionally, we were working to get a fiscal compliance officer on board to help us manage all of the financial tracking. And I will be back in December because of the canceled meetings in November and the holidays. I won't be here in November, but I will be back in December and give you an update then. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hill, I have you signed in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Gabrielle. This is a great overview. The project's coming back to the commissioners for approval. I'm not quite clear on the timeline. When do you imagine that will be happening?
So I will bring the projects back as they, at the next available meeting. If they're larger than five hundred thousand and they've gone through the initial approval. So what happens with a project is they'll submit through the portal and that is, that gives me the opportunity to review for evaluation and also the opportunity so we can provide the documentation for Treasury. If it's a CIP, and usually the bigger ones are either a CIP or require staffing. So they will go through that process and also bring them back at the next available meeting. So I won't wait till this meeting.
On the fourteenth? The December fourteenth meeting?
Yeah, if there are projects, so the projects that were listed, that are listed on here are at all various different stages. So some of these haven't been submitted yet. Some of them will be coming to you on the fourteenth, yes.
Okay. And then the, the subgrants to nonprofits and then any of these staffing positions and procurement contracts or projects over a half a million, those will be coming in on the fourteenth or?
Depending on where they are in the process.
Okay. So when is the drop dead date for our subgrants to nonprofits?
So that process for an open competitive process to, we have not opened that yet. And we're not going to open that until we have staff on board.
Okay, okay. That's what you meant by the new person coming in?
Absolutely.
So will you notify the commissioners when that's open? Because I'm hearing from a lot of nonprofits and I just want to make sure I'm sending them to the right place.
Yes, and if they're interested, if they sign up on our website and put their email in there, we'll put a notice on there and that will automatically send them a notice so it's, they don't have to go back and check.
Okay.
If they put their email into that website, it'll generate a notice to them when we put an update on the website.
Not the leave a comment part of our website?
Not the leave, no, just on the, on the, on the homepage.
Can you send me that thing offline, just so I can make sure I'm getting it to folks? Thank you so much. And thank you. This is a very organized process. And I'm really looking forward to seeing all the rest of the requests and how we can support this community getting out of COVID. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Herman, do you have anything? Okay. My only, my only concern is, Mr. Manager, and I'll, I'll direct my comments to you, is, is as we start to add FTEs and, and doing certain kinds of things in the community, including CARES Campus and, and Our Place and et cetera, I just wonder how we're going to sustain it. You know, I mean, this is, it's a, it's a little disconcerting, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold my tongue for now, but.
Well, Mr. Vice Chair, if I could, if I could answer, the vast majority of the things that are being invited to, for approval are one-time costs. They are not FTEs. Now, the courts are an exception to that, to break down the backlog that the courts and the DA's office experienced during the shutdown. But those discussions are around contract hires. Okay? So we are being very diligent to try to minimize any, any additional FTEs. We've heard that loud and clear from this commission as well as from the public. There will be some. But we, we are doing our best to focus on one-time costs.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I, I, I will say, I will also say, Ms. Enfield is seeing situations where departments are coming back and asking for a lot of FTEs. So if you, as commissioners, start hearing complaints about that, I can't get my, my stuff approved. We are holding the line as best we can so that we don't get ourselves in a situation where we're adding a lot of, of headcount that will not have a sustainable funding source. And the other thing I will say for Commissioner Hill is if you have nonprofits that you think we ought to be taking a look at, feel free to contact me or Ms. Enfield. And we welcome those discussions. This will be, it, it's difficult because this is going to be a long process. We have the first forty-five million, as you all know. And we're making progress in terms of assigning priorities against that. But we'll be doing this for a couple of years. So, you know, things that appear to be good ideas today, a year from now, there will be other good ideas. And so I, I just urge that we need to pace ourselves in terms of what we do and how, how much of the money we commit in the early stages.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. This is for discussion only, so if there is no other. And, and Madam Clerk, for the record, will you please note that the chairman has, he's dropped off now?
I sure will.
And so that leaves it with the three of us. No bathroom breaks or we won't have a quorum. Okay, that takes us into item number eight, which is our consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Enfield. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Is there anything on the consent agenda that commissioners would like a, an explanation on? Or need pulled out of consent? Okay, if there isn't any, let me call for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on item number eight?
I have nobody signed in.
Okay. All right, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar. Thank you.
Okay.
Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Hill, second by Ms. Herman. We ask for public comment. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, again with Commissioner Lucy being absent as well as Commissioner Jung.
The record will reflect that Chair Lucy is not here. It's in the system incorrectly.
Okay. Yes, no. Will you, will you make, will you correct that?
I, I can't.
Okay.
But it's noted in our record.
Correct, yeah, please correct it on the record. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Hill, do you have a, a small block vote that we can entertain?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to say that Sharon Chamberlain is here for item number nine, and we thank her for coming, for Hopes. But I'm happy to make the block vote for item number nine and item number ten, move to approve both of these items.
Okay.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. So, Mr. Manager, will you read those items and then I will call for public comment?
Certainly. Item nine is a recommendation to adopt Resolution R twenty-one dash sixty-six declaring Washoe County's intent to convey to Nevada Hopes, a five oh one C three organization, the property located at nineteen oh five East Fourth Street, Reno, Nevada, APN zero zero eight dash three eight two dash oh one, without consideration, is authorized in NRS two 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 four four dot two eight four and set a date for a public hearing to be held, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at, at which objections can be heard and other matters properly related thereto. If ultimately approved, Nevada Hopes would be required to operate the chair for charitable or civic purposes. or civic purposes for the community on terms specified in a purchase and sale agreement and related documents. And if the property ever ceased to be used, it would revert automatically to Washoe County. Item 10 is a recommendation to approve the Second Amendment to Golf Management License and Services, Sierra Sage Golf Course Agreement between Washoe County and Cal-Maz Golf Management, LLC, DPA Maz Golf Management. For full management of Sierra Sage Golf Course for a five-year period commencing retroactive to July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2026, contractor shall pay to county 10% of gross revenue, defined as total greens fees, ticket and annual fees, and tournament green fees, less capital improvement fees collected. Reneg- renegotiating the payment of fees associated with utilizing affluent water provided by the City of Reno and renegotiating capital improvement plan funding. Capital improvement fees collected are $2 for each round of play. Round of play is calculated by taking the revenue of all greens fees divided by $31.50.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on either item nine or item 10?
I have nobody signed in for either.
Okay. I will close public comment and I will bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Herman. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen. Okay. That takes us to item number 11. Before we jump into item number 11, let me ask a question of our legal counsel. This is a public hearing. It's an MPA. Do we need a supermajority on this, Mr. Edwards?
No, Mr. Chair. The supermajority is the Planning Commission recommendation level. Once it comes to you, it's a simple majority. So the, sorry, the supermajority is at the Planning Commission level.
Okay.
The simple majority is at your level.
Okay. I'm not trying to question your acumen, but you're, you're sure of this. I don't want it to come back. I don't, I don't, I don't, don't take that the wrong way. Not spoken in the pejorative. I just want to be sure.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. That takes us into item number 11, which is a public hearing. Mr. Manager, I will open item 11 and will you introduce it?
Certainly. Item 11 is a public hearing on a master plan amendment case number WMPA 21-002 Village Green Commerce Center specific plan. To adopt an amendment to the Village Green Commerce Center specific plan, which is located in Appendix D of the Spanish Springs area plan, a component of the Washoe County Master Plan and consists of APNs 534-561-06, 534-561-07, 534-561-08, and 534-561-10. If approved, the amendment will add clarifying language and include the following. Number one, removal goal five infrastructure. Number two, APN 534-561-10 is exempted from the Spanish Springs area plan, Appendix A, including the building site coverage requirements. Number three, clarified language concerning setbacks from residential dwellings for building height. Number four, remove sidewalk required along Caia de la Plata, Plata frontage. Number five, add color and evergreen trees as options for 50 feet in length of building walls. Number six, APN 534-561-10 is exempted from the following architecture provisions. General guidelines, general efficient tenant criteria of building missing in form, massing, I'm sorry, in form, mechanical equipment and building materials, the following landscaping provision, site grading, and the following sustainability provisions for low-impact development standards and environmental sustainability standards of the Village Green Commercial, Commerce, Commerce Center specific plan. Number seven, clarify that illuminated signs will only be allowed when not adjacent to residential property. Number eight, remove security lighting section and parking lighting requirements. Number nine, clarify that affluent water is only required when available in the area. Number 10, clarify that no loading docks are allowed to be adjacent to residential property. Number 11, remove figure D5 business park buffering. Number 12, APN 534-561-10 is exempted from low-impact development standards and environmental sustainability standards. Number 13, clarify roadway improvements as required by Washoe County Engineering and Capital Projects. And number 14, remove equestrian easement. The board may adopt the proposed amendment, may modify the proposed amendment, and refer the modified amendment back to the Planning Commission for its report in accordance with NRS 278.220 subsection 4, or may deny the proposed amendment after the public hearing. If adopted, the master plan amendment will take effect with a determination of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, and if approved, authorize the chair to sign the resolution to that effect.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. We have with us today Ms. Olander. One of our senior planners. Ms. Olander, would you?
Good afternoon, Julie Olander with Planning and Building. Would you like a presentation or?
As a matter of fact, I would. This is in District Four. This has been kind of a hotspot and there are some things that I would like clarification on. I know that you have a, a slide presentation, I believe, that, that I saw. And if you don't mind, while you're going through that, I'm going to stop you in a couple of places because it, it's, there's just some questions that I have that I need, I need clarification. Some of the things don't seem to be congruous to me, but I'll, I'll bring them up along the way if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Okay.
As you said, this is a master plan amendment to the Village Green Commerce Center. And here, whoops, sorry. I'm going too fast. Is it not going back? Okay. Okay. So this is a request for a master plan amendment to the Village Green Commerce Center, which is Appendix D in the Spanish Springs area plan. And it's primarily for one parcel, 534-561-10. And here's just an overview. You can see where the main parcel is. And the Village Green area plan includes four parcels. Two of them are part of an open space detention area and they're owned by Washoe County. The smaller parcel 08 is part of the plan. We've tried to contact the property owner, the applicant has, and I have also, they have not responded. So that's the reason they are not a part of this plan and these changes because they have not responded in, you know, asking to be in part of the changes or not. So they just have not responded at all. So we haven't included any changes to the plan for that specific parcel.
Okay. So, so on that, because this is an important slide for me, on that, 534-561-08, this, none of the setbacks or any of those things will apply to them?
Correct. So the plan that was put together in the early 2000s, which included primarily these two parcels, that part of that, that original plan is still in place for that 08 parcel.
Yeah, there was actually a lot more parcels involved in the early 2000s when David Freer brought it to the community as Village of the Green, which was a, a green industrial complex. He was going to have, you know, solar panels and, you know, wind farm and et cetera, which was, with all due respect, and I've known David for many years, it was just a pie in the sky. It was never a, a good concept. I mean, I guess it worked on paper for the commissioners at the time, but it, it was not, it was not a great concept. So there were other parcels, but this is, this is what we're down to now. As an example, the, the one little residential parcel that's right above it that, that, I can't see that it's like 09, I think it is.
Yes.
That was included in this as well as some of the parcels to the east. So, so proceed.
So just like you said, you've given quite a bit of background that I was going to give, but also just to point out, the two parcels that are owned by Washoe County are master planned and zoned open space and the other two parcels are master planned and zoned And like you said, the original plan had specifics, was developed specifically for a certain developer and that developer is no longer a party of the, the development. And so now it's being modified for new parties and new interests. I'm not moving forward.
You've been having problems with it all day.
Okay. It's not me.
It's not you.
Okay, good. So as, as the manager read out, all the changes we're including, the primary ones for that one parcel, parcel 10, is to allow parking areas and driveways to face residential parcels, however, not the loading docks. The loading docks will not be allowed to face the residential parcels. And then we also had to clarify some building heights, signage, lighting and, and lighting requirements. Since this plan was put together, we've come up with more code requirements for industrial adjacent to residential. So we feel like those code sections are a lot stronger than the Village Green was. And then we also updated the transportation improvement section. Originally, that, that section was primarily for the inters, inters, interchange, the intersection at Pyramid. And that is no longer, that, those changes have already been made by NDOT. So the engineering, Washoe County Engineering made some other suggestions for that transportation section. And then we also removed the equestrian easement. There was an easement that was planned along the southern border and the thought was, is again, the original developer had specific plans for this development. And they really aren't pertinent to the area anymore. At least originally, we thought we could link the equestrian easement from the development to the south to the developments north of Village Green. However, that is not of interest of the neighborhood out there and we respected that. So we just reboot, removed the equestrian easement totally. If there comes an interest in the future, we can come back and visit that. We do have that property along the, where the detention area is, we could put a path along that property. So if there's an interest in the future of having some kind of pathway system out there, we could go that route.
Okay, so before you, before you leave that, go, go back if you would. Update the transportation improvement section. Now, now here's, I'm in a, and I know the applicant is sitting in the audience, but I'm, I've got a little bit of a rub here. Part of the agreement was, was that they were going to participate along with the property on the north side, which is now residential, on the north side of Caia de la Plata. They were going to participate in the upgrade of the intersection of Caia de la Plata and Pyramid. That intersection still needs massive upgrades. The geometry, with, with all due respect to NDOT and RTC, and RTC funded a good deal of that with NDOT's approval. So that was not an NDOT-funded project. It was, it was really, it came from, from RTC funds. The geometry is wrong on that intersection. That intersection does not work properly. And when you get a, when you get a, a project of this nature that goes in, when you've got, you know, large trucks and et cetera, and they're so close to that intersection, I, I, I'm having a tough time eliminating the requirements for the transportation improvements that, that are going to become necessary. Now, I'm not suggesting that this one developer has to, to assume the entire load. But that said, why should, why should taxpayers be on the hook to fund that intersection and the improvements of that intersection? And, and when they're just going to have to pay some RIF fees where, where it was a part of the conditions originally that were associated with that property? So those are one of the things that I, I have a rub with. I just, it needs, it needs to be dealt with at some point. Again, that intersection, I mean, if you go out there, we, we had to make huge improvements just so that people with large horse trailers could negotiate that corner. They, they could not make the southbound turn. I was, I was able to convince NDOT, and NDOT was, was amenable to this. They, they put in a deceleration lane that, that turns east on Caia de la Plata. But that, that whole, that whole intersection is, is likely going to need some major improvements in, in the not-too-distant future. And, and it is because of, of all of the development that's going on in, on both the north side and, and what will occur here on the south side of, of Caia de la Plata. So I don't know how we remedy that. I don't know whether we can do that when they actually bring in a permit. I don't see Mr. Solero or Mr. Smith in the audience.
Well, can I add, give you, give you a little background on that, Commissioner?
Okay.
If I can.
Please, thank you.
So the section that we added in that transportation improvement, and I, I apologize, I don't have it on a slide here. I had it for the Planning Commission and I was trying to whittle down a little bit for you folks. So what we added in that is that the Village Green Commerce Center will be required to improve Cali de la Plata to commercial collector roadway standards from the easternly port, project boundary to Pyramid Highway, Pyramid Right-Away. And prior to the submittal of building permits, each developer shall enter into an agreement with Washoe County stipulating the improvements to be constructed by the developer, developer, and the timing of the construction of said improvements to the satisfaction of the county engineer.
Okay.
And Duane Smith was a party of this. So he was comfortable with this so that any kind of development that comes in at this location, when they come in, this is going to be reviewed. So they're going to review it from Pyramid to the development. So anything along Cali de la Plata to the public, the public right-of-way of Pyramid will be reviewed.
I still, I still would like to see, over and above some RIF funding, I still would like to see some kind of participation in, again, the, the intersection, the intersection needs, the geometry needs to look somewhat, if I may Julie, call you Julie if that's okay, it needs to look like Eagle Canyon, La Posada, and Pyramid. That's what it needs to look like. That's, that's the ultimate goal, is to get it to look like that. Because, because you've got a lot of traffic both on the west side. Again, I'm not suggesting that this developer is, is, is culpable for the entire intersection. That's not at all what I am suggesting. But what I'm suggesting is, is major improvements need to occur at that intersection because when RTC did it under a previous director, I, I'm sorry, it was done to substandard standards, in my opinion. It, it, I mean, there, there were all kinds of issues that are still plaguing that intersection, not, you know, not just the, the geometry itself, but the depth of the turn queues and the turn pockets and, and XL, DCL lanes and all kinds of stuff that still need to be addressed. So, you know, as we grow out there, everybody, including RTC, because they're the beneficiaries of the RIF, the Regional Road Impact Fee funds, need to participate in, in the, the planning and the development and the upgrade of that intersection to make it more viable, in my opinion.
Yeah, just, we came up with this language because that was the concern that we had was who was going to be coming in first, you know?
Right.
This developer might come in, you know, and then there might be some right behind them. So that's the reason we pulled the, put the wording in the, the county engineer so that there would be some kind of collaboration between the developments that are going on out there and an understanding of what was coming in so that it wouldn't be just placed on one developer, whoever that might be.
No, and I, and again, I, that is not...
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, and that's the reason we use that language to eliminate that, you know, that happening and making sure that we have some kind of coordination going on.
Okay. Forgive me for being pedantic. Please, please proceed. Thank you for that clarification. And the, and the equestrian easement, by the way, actually, there's a couple of things on here before you go away. So, so the removal of the equestrian easement, I, I don't have a problem with that. I always had a problem with putting an equestrian easement that only benefited Bridle Path, which is to the south because, and I know we're still looking, I, I, I'm waiting to, to see what the investigation will uncover and, and what it portends. That said, I do think that there needs to be some plan for a... That said, I do think that there needs to be some plan for a path, because even if it's along the far west side, there is still a way to sort of get around and potentially go down the side of Pyramid Highway. So, those are, those are the kinds of things that I, I, I don't want them to go away. And, and then I'll get to, I'll get to the clarification of the building height and signage lighting requirements here in just a second, because, well, in fact, let's, let's talk about the, the light requirements. It can't face any residential properties, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's residential properties across the street of Caia de la Plata to the north. Those are all residential over there. There are residential properties to the east. There's two large properties there. There are residential properties to the south. That's all Bridle Path. And then there is one 10-acre parcel to the west. So, where do we put the signage?
So, it's not so much the signage. I think the question about the signage, I'm going to go back to my, and I, I apologize again. I should have been more.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I should have included this kind of information.
These are not gotcha questions, Julie. I promise you.
I should have anticipated something more in this. But anyway, so the signage that we took out was primarily because of, there was just some, that was more of a clarification. The applicant felt like some of the signage, the way that was written in there was not clear. So, that was more of a clarification. The lighting, we wanted, we really came to the conclusion that the adjacency lighting standards we have in that section for industrial adjacent to residential is much more, it was, has stronger requirements than the Village Green. So, we felt like it would be better for this, for the lighting to not, they're not to be, you know, you have to look here and then you have to look there. So, we just sort of took that section out totally for only this parcel, so that people, when this development goes forward for this one parcel, they would just go back to the section in 406. So, that that is, so they understand, and that's a pretty well-understood and has worked overall fairly well. There are still issues with lighting and we are aware of that. So, there's, lighting is a challenge for residential.
It is. I mean, it isn't, because there's, look, there's no such thing as no spill lighting. It's like clean coal. It doesn't exist.
Right. So, I think it's the best, at the point we're at, it's the, it works the best overall. It's still, like I said, it's a challenge. There's still going to be some houses that are going to be impacted by lighting.
Well, and I, and, and again, I, I'll, I'll wait to see what happens. And if it, if it occurs while I'm still in office, then, you know, I, I don't know, we'll just, we'll have to, we'll have to cross that bridge when we come to it. Because those, those folks who live on that south side, even though they have large parcels, they will, I can only imagine having that in my own backyard. I, I know when my neighbor to the, that lives behind me, if he leaves his back porch light on, I see it at night. And, and so, and we, and we love, we love the fact that we don't have a lot of streetlights in our neighborhoods out there.
Yes, I think it's just going to be, fortunately, this is not like the industrial across the street off of Isador. And I think we've tried to let the, and the residents in the neighborhood know that, that this is a different type of industrial. It's going to mean we're a light industrial. So, we're anticipating that the lighting will be less than what we're seeing across the street at Isador.
Okay. Commissioner Hill, do you have, do you have a question? I'm sorry. I don't mean to, I'm, I'm sorry to overtake the conversation. I apologize.
You're not at all. I, I have a question for you, Mr. Chairman, because you live out here and you're more familiar with the area. And also for Julie, on number four, removing the sidewalk required on Caia de la Plata frontage. Is there a reason that we'd be removing sidewalk requirements in this area?
Yeah, and, and I, and I actually happen to agree with this one. It's only because there's actually a large drainage ditch on that, on that front side that abuts Caia de la Plata, that ultimately it will probably have to be encased. I don't, I don't think there's any other way. It's going to, it's going to have to be put into a, not an open culvert, but a closed culvert. At that time, there may end up being a sidewalk put in. It's not, it is not in any way a walkable neighborhood at this time. There, there, there are sidewalks on the opposite side, if memory serves me correctly, on the, on the north side. So, so there is a, there is a way, and, and ultimately, if, if you, and we're not looking at it right now, but there is a whole bunch of neighborhood commercial that abuts Pyramid Highway. It's going to, this, this whole area is going to look very different. And as we recall, Commissioners, we recently, just to the north of this, approved a fire station purchase, a piece of, of property that was, that is suitable for a fire station. So, the dynamics are going to look a little different in the future, but I, my guess is, is that if, if, if it, at some point, we require, and that's why I wish Engineering was here, if we require that to be encased into a culvert, that a sidewalk would certainly go on top of it, although I don't, I don't think it would be terribly well-used. It's just not a, it's not an area that you walk in a lot. That's, and there aren't a lot of sidewalks over in the industrial park and, for Haco either. So, those are, that's my long-short answer. I'm sorry, Julie. And I have nobody else. So, go ahead. Keep, keep going. There's a, there's a couple of more things. And again, I'm not trying to be pedantic, but I, I have a deep history with this property, all these properties.
I'm basically done, because the rest is just about the noticing, which was, it was noticed October 15th in the RJJ, RGJ. And then we had a neighborhood meeting that we held through Zoom on June 16th. People overall were happy with the changes we were proposing. There were a lot of questions about the path. And at that time, we were talking about, you know, the path maintained, being maintained, because we were looking at connecting it up to the park to the north Sugarloaf. However, after further discussions, we've decided that it's, at this time, not as needed as we had anticipated. And so, overall, there was a, a good meeting. And then the application was reviewed by the departments, primarily Engineering, and there were no recommendations of denial. We had that one recommendation from Engineering to change the transportation section, which we did. And I think that's it, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to, let me draw your attention to a couple of different places. Page eight in the staff report, attachment A, which we don't have, you have to look at it, it's, it's not, you have to look at it online, Commissioners, unfortunately, because it's, the packet is about a 200-page document, literally. That's not a hyperbole. But I will, I will just tell you, and Julie, it, it says, so, we're talking about setback requirements. On the, it says adjacent to Caia de la Plata, we have a 20-foot setback. I completely agree with that. That's, that's not an uncomfortable number for me, except for, I don't know how wide that drainage culvert is. It's probably about 20 feet. So, that, I don't know how that's going to be accomplished, because that's, that, that drainage culvert, it, it ultimately drains Griffith Canyon, which is to the east. And I can tell you right now, there's a lot of water that comes out of Griffith Canyon periodically. And it's all trying to flow down to the center of the valley. Comes out of Stormy Canyon, which is on the west. A lot of water. So, I, I question that 20-foot setback in terms of just the drainage that, that is required out there. As this, as, as we start to develop more of those parcels, I, I, and maybe we can get the applicant to come up. So, I'm, I'm concerned, is that a building setback? So, they can be 20 feet right off of Caia de la Plata?
So, let me catch, I'm trying to catch on what page you're at.
I'm on, I'm on page, here's, here's what I have, Julie.
Okay, yeah. So, it's the heading that.
Attachment, it says attachment A, page eight.
Is it under buildings, table D, building setbacks?
Yes, correct. Table D1.
D1, okay. And you're talking about adjacent to Cali de la Plata?
Yeah, I'm going to go down the list.
So, that's a, a 20-foot setback from the property line, not from Cali de la Plata. So, these are all property lines. So.
Those are property line setbacks. I understand.
20-foot setback from the front of that property. So, they front Cali de la Plata, but that drainage ditch is in, is in the right of way. So, it's not, we're, we're, you know, going just directly to the property line. And then they have to be 20 feet back from that.
You know, my residential property is 30 feet. So, it's, it's kind of, it's a little disconcerting, but I'll, let me, let me move on. On the west side, they want a five-foot setback. There's actually a residential parcel on that side of the property. How is it that we can, on the west side, that belongs to, and I, I, I know them. I've, I've known them for a while, since they bought that parcel, and I have been in direct contact with them. But, but on that west side, it shows a five-foot setback. How can that be? It's a residential parcel.
So, this was from the original, so as you probably remember, we went through this about two years ago. And this setback was set then, is my, is my recollection. And it might be helpful to have Mike Rayly come up. He might have a better recollection on this.
And, and Mr. Rayly and I have had these conversations offline.
I, I believe that has been there for a while, but I could be mistaken.
Well, we're, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to approve it, and he knows this, with the five-foot setback. Mr. Rayly, go ahead. Please tell us who you are and.
Good afternoon. For the record, Mike Rayly with Christie Corporation here, representing the property owner. The reason that that was five feet, and I'll be honest, it was in, it was in oversight, that property was zoned industrial. And when the current owners bought the property, there's a single-family house on it. They petitioned to have that rezoned to, I think it's.
MDR.
Yeah, exactly. So, that setback stuck. We're happy to change that to a 50-foot building setback on the west side.
Good. Okay, that's, that's good. And on the, on the front, Mr. Rayly, 20 feet from the property line. I don't, I, I can't see where the property line is, but, but what I want to ensure, because here's, here's what I want to make sure you guys understand. Potentially, you guys are going to be solving a bunch of drainage issues. As you, as you well know, there's a whole bunch of water that comes from the east side of that property. And my hope is, is that you'll stop it from flowing to the south, and you'll move it again to the west. And instead of allowing it, and I know that, I know that you're not allowed to allow any more than flows off with, with current flows with undeveloped flows. You know, it's that, it's a one-to-one. But what I'm asking you guys to memorialize somewhere is to say, look, we'll, we'll try to minimize those flows heading to the south, because what happens is, is off of Moonbeam and Tranquil Courts and those, those properties flood naturally, because there's so much water coming off of those natural, from those natural flows. Again, some of it's coming out of Griffith, and some of it's coming off of Sugarloaf, and some, and lots, and lots being changed out there now. And I know that we're redirecting, and I'm hoping that, that it'll, it'll make some, it'll make some much-needed corrections for those folks who live on the far north end of Bridle Path, south end of your properties.
Yeah, and a final plan is still being developed, but I can tell you with what, knowing the, the history of how that, you mentioned the, comes in, the drainage comes in from the east, we would capture that water, direct it into our facility, our detention facility, and ultimately down to the basin. So, it should result in a significant improvement for the adjoining properties.
Okay. That's, that's good. Would you be amenable to changing the adjacency to Caia de la Plata and, and give me 30 feet?
I'm going to look to see if, if that works with.
I don't think it's going to change your, yeah. Okay, memorialize that. So, we're going to go to 30 feet there. 50 feet on the west that abuts the current, the current property owner there, that is MDR, if, if. And I know you guys are in negotiations. I know Larry's talking to you. If that property becomes a, an industrial parcel again, where you come back to me, I'm happy to grant a five-foot setback from, from the, you know, our, our detention facility.
Sure.
That is of no consequence to me. Except, except for I want to maintain some kind of a trail on that side, you know, the option for a trail. So, we'll, we'll discuss that when it, you know, when the time is right.
Sure.
Okay? Okay, well, I have you here. And this is why you don't like coming in front of me, Mr. Rayly. On that same attachment, Ms. Olander, which is table D1, under building height, it says maximum building height shall be 35 feet. I don't have an issue with that. All buildings exceeding 30 feet in height must be located a minimum 125 feet from any existing residence. Are you guys going to be able to maintain that, even with a 50-foot setback?
Yes. Yeah, in fact, I just want to look back at Kerry to make sure on the, on the west side, but yes, we, we have checked those.
Okay, all right. And, and then talk to me briefly about docks, because you got residential properties on, for all intents and purposes, four sides. So, where are your docks going to be?
So, the docks would be located internal, so if, if there were cross-docking of buildings, it would be facing each other, with the exterior of the buildings having no docks. So, those, any cross-dock building would be essentially wedged between another building.
Internally?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that. Okay. And, and so let me go back to stormwater in, in the flood control basin, which is removal of goal five, because of the flood control basin and, and a completed, completing a planned signalized intersection has been, has been completed. Now, the removal of goal five, so somewhere, I want you to memorialize for me that, that you guys are going to move those flows around to such a degree that, that they're not, that they're flowing towards our detention facilities. I'm not asking you to retain or detain water on your own property, as we have, we've had this conversation out north, where, where there are, you know, they're, they're actually retaining water on their property, and we, we did a, like a one-to-five ratio. That's not what I'm asking you to do here. What I'm asking you to do is to design your drainage plan in such a way that it feeds our facility in Spanish Springs. And I'm really proud of the stormwater utility. A lot of people, I, I get complaints all the time that, oh, you know, a street was flooded. You should have seen it 35 years ago, when we first moved out there. You know, where, where Eagle Canyon is now and La Posada, you could not get across that intersection. There was so much water. There was over six feet of water going across that intersection. So, we have done a great job, in my opinion. Is it perfect? Heck, no. Is it going to take every storm? Heck, no. Nothing does. We, we can't, we can't assume that, that we could ever build anything that would, that could take, you know, whatever someone can imagine. That said, it is much better than it, than it was 30-plus years ago. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm very, very proud of what's happened out there in, in terms of our, our stormwater utility. So, my hope is, is that you guys will come up with a drainage plan, and you give me, because you and I know, if you give me your word, your word is your bond. I've never had you go back on your word, Mr. Rayly, to me. I've never had you do that. Give me your word that you guys will come up with a drainage plan that moves that water towards our detention facilities and our, and our facilities, so that it is not dramatically impacting those southern properties as it does today. So, you're going to really improve those, those flows.
Sure. And, and I'll tell you, from an engineering design perspective, that's going to occur no matter what, how, on how we develop the site, because we're going to capture the water that's already coming onto our site and flowing onto those properties, and then direct that to the regional detention facility. So, that's what we need to do to make our site work, and that's just an added benefit of that.
All right. Where are you going to put the trash enclosures? Are they going to be next to residential properties?
We haven't developed a site plan to, to that level yet.
Will you ensure that the trash enclosures are not next to residential properties?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I want that memorialized as well. All right? Sorry, Commissioners. Forgive me, please. I, I, I beg your indulgence. Commissioners, do you guys have any other questions for staff? Or Mr. Rayly? Okay?
You did a fine job.
Mr. Rayly doesn't have a leg now. I chewed it off. I apologize. We, we have legs in the back of the room. Go ahead.
Was there, oh, I thought there was a question.
No, 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 no. I said I chewed your leg off. We have replacement legs in the back of the room. Okay, if, if, Commissioners, if you guys have no other questions, I have no other questions for staff. And I'm prepared to support this. If one of you want to make the motion, or I can make the motion. Okay, let me find the motion in my, in my packet. Okay, so, Ms. Olander, you have, have you taken copious notes as to what? Good, all right. So, if it's okay with you, Mr. Edwards.
Yeah, Commissioner, could we just make sure that we have the rights notes, so that we're on the same page?
Yes.
I just want to confirm that you're saying 50 feet on the west side, change the five feet to 50 feet?
Correct. That, that is adjacent, that is adjacent to the current MDR property.
And then along Cali de la Plata, it'll be 30 feet?
30-foot setback from the property.
And then we'll put language in there about trash enclosures will not be, probably we'll put it in the same kind of way, probably with the docking. we'll put it in the same kind of way, with the docking stations are.
Yep, same as the docking.
All right.
And then, and then stormwater.
And the stormwater, I'm not sure how, that's going to be a little more complicated to enclose. I think what Mr. Rayly said, that that would probably happen more through the building permit process.
Okay.
This, you know, we want to do, we do want to keep this as a master plan document.
All right, and I'm okay with that. I just, I just want consideration that to be on the record.
Yeah, I, I think how he explained it, that is exactly how it's going to have to move forward with the building permit process.
Okay. So then, so then, do you understand?
I have three things I will add to the, the document.
Correct. And I, and, and please make sure also that we, Washoe County, is maintaining some type of a path on the far west side and, and the option for that.
So we had that originally in, you know, the problem we have right now and, is how the, the parcels are laid out. I would ask that if that other parcel that currently is residential, and I know there's conversation about it...
Yes.
Coming into this plan, I, I would ask possibly if we could hold off to that comment, I mean, putting that kind of language in until that parcel comes in.
I just want an easement. I don't, I, I just, I just want some kind of an easement that, that can be dealt with in, in one form or another.
So would you want the easement along the Washoe County property?
Probably.
All right. So we'll add the easement. I'll have to add that back into the document along the...
It's just, it'd be along the far west side, because, because you've added, you've added that as open space.
Right, but the, the west side also is that one privately owned property with a house on it. So we'd have to put the trail on the Washoe County property.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay. It's, it...
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, we've listed that detention facility as open space, which technically, to me, it's not open space.
Yeah.
There's a, I have a different definition of open space, because we don't allow people to use that detention facility for fun purposes, their dirt bikes and et cetera, but yet we've called it open space.
Right. It should probably, it fits more the public, a semi-public facility.
It's, it's a little misleading.
It is, it is.
Okay.
An agreement.
All right, but I'm still willing to support. And I would make a motion that we support the, the planning commission's decision as listed in the staff report with the amendments as mentioned during the item.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion, and I have a second. Before we go into this, Mr. District Attorney, pull on me over. Talk to me, Nate.
So the changes that you've proposed today are certainly within the purview of what the county commission can do in this process. The only wrinkle procedurally is that before you can make modifications to what the planning commission has approved, it must be referred back to them for a report. They have 40 days to make their report. Once that report is done, or if they do not do it within 40 days, you can hear the item again and move forward with the changes to what the planning commission has approved. So what you would do today would be a motion to propose changes to what the planning commission has approved and send it back to them for a report.
Okay, well, really, the only substantive one that I can see is the, the five-feet setback on the west side. But it also says that, that, isn't, isn't there language that, that, that the setbacks would be 50 feet on any adjoining residential property? So is that, is that really that substantive? Does it have to go back?
So here's what the statute says. It's 278.220 subsection 4. No change in or addition to the master plan or any part thereof as adopted by the planning commission may be made by the governing body in adopting the same until the proposed change or addition has been referred to the planning commission for a report.
Okay, all right. Well, I can't allow it to go forward with a five-foot setback. So I apologize, Mr. Rayly. Okay. All right, so we'll make a motion to send it back to the planning commission. That's, I mean, that's all we can do at this point. Okay, is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I have three emails to be placed on the record. One from Lisa Durgen, one from Andrea Gatto Caldwell, and one from Elizabeth Beadle.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Okay, I have a motion by Hartung, second by Herman. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Lucy still being unavailable. Okay. All right, Mr. Manager, that takes us to item number 12.
Item number 12 is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 2, by adopting supplemental, supplement number 15 to the Washoe County Code, and all clerical and technical corrections made therein. If passed, this supplement will codify ordinances amending the Washoe County Code that were adopted between February 2016 and June 2020, and conclude, and includes ordinance numbers 1575, 1576, 1579, 1580, 1581, 1585, 1588, 1589, 1590, 1593, 1599, 1600, 1601, 1602, 1609, 1610, 1611, 1612, 1614, 1616, 1617, 1622, 1628, 1629, 1643, and 1650. The supplement does not include Washoe County Development Code, Chapter 110, which is published separately from the general Washoe, general Washoe County Code.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This will be ordinance number 1674, formerly bill number 1863.
Okay. Do we need a supermajority on this, Mr. Edwards?
No, you don't. This is a simple majority.
Okay, good. Commissioners, this is a second reading and an adoption. Do we have any questions for staff? Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay, I will close public comment, bring it back to the board, looking for a motion to either adopt or deny ordinance number 1674.
Move to adopt ordinance 1674.
Okay. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Herman. Is there any other discussion on this item? We ask for public comment. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. That takes us, Commissioners, to item number 13, public comment. Madam Clerk? And, actually, Mr. Manager, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Item 13 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, item 14.